I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, August 19, 2021, to order. We could stand for pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in the pistol with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Haley, would you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Village Manager Frances.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley and Finance Director Johns.
Thank you. I have a couple of things on my report tonight. One is I'd like to appoint Amador Valenzuela to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 2024, and a motion to appoint Melinda Brahm to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 2026. If I can have a motion and a second, please?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Trustee Marsh Oska. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. One final thing. On the census, the updated census numbers have been released, and the complete census information will be available on the Village of Riverside's website. I'm happy to announce for the first time in over 30 years that our population number did not only increase when it was a projected decrease, but it increased by 423 people, or 4.8 percent, to 9298. The results of the census help determine how hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funding, including grants and support to states, counties, and communities, are spent every year for the next decade. It helps Riverside get its fair share for schools, roads, and public works. Riverside should receive approximately $60,000 annually in extra financial funding. I would like to take this time to thank Trustee Evans, staff, and Riverside TV for their collective work educating our residents about the importance of an accurate census count. Secondly, in the coming days, our schools will be opening up for the school year. It has been 17 long months since we have seen this much activity in town, so please be alert, stay off your phones, and always be cognizant when entering these schools. And that's all I have. Manager Frances?
Thank you, President Ballerine. I have a couple of items to update the board and residents on. The first item being the communication tower was installed, and actually, the installation was completed today at Public Works. So that piece of that project is done, and now we'll begin on the other pieces of the water meter implementation as we go through that process. Also, the pre-construction layout and silt fence installation for Swan Pond will occur next week, with construction beginning the week of August 30. And we'll also put out notifications to residents so they have that information readily available, in addition to some benchmarks that we anticipate as construction progresses. Some residents, I'm sure, have noticed that there are comm ed polls in Village right-of-way. Village staff over the past few months have been actively contacting them, trying to find out when these polls will be installed. I was notified today that they will finally be installed next week. I asked for definitive confirmation on this, because there are a number of them throughout the village, and they affirmed that that was the case. If anything should change, please note that staff is on top of this, and we will notify residents if this deviates from what we have already been notified of. I wanted to congratulate Officer Ryan Spears, who graduated the police academy today. He will begin field training next week, and so he'll progress through that process with the hopes of him being on the road in the near future after field training is completed. I did want to notify residents. We received this notification this evening, so it will be on our website and our Facebook page tomorrow. It is called Destination Vaccination, and it is in collaboration with Cook County Public Health Department, KESH Health, with regard to providing rights for residents to get their COVID vaccine. Two other items. Our annual movie in the park is this Friday. The movie is Inside Out, as selected by Riverside residents, and the movie will begin at dusk. It is sponsored by State Representative Mike Zaleski, and we thank you for that. Finally, we have a tumbling program sponsored through Wesra that will be at our Quincy Building. We currently have five participants registered, and registration is currently open. Registration will remain open until the date within the Wesra brochure. If you have any questions, you can absolutely contact the Parks and Rec Department. This class will occur on Thursdays from September 16 through November 11, and it's from 6:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. And that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to resident comments for non-agenda items. I don't know if there's any residents out in the hallway that would like to speak. Is there anyone in here that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approve for the voucher list of bills, August 19, 2021. Approve the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, August 5, 2021. Review and File Landscape Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes, June 29, 2021. Review and File Park and Recreation Board Meeting Minutes, May 17, 2021. Review and File Riverside TV Commission Meeting Minutes, July 12, 2021. Review and File Community Development, Finance, Fire, Police, and Public Works Department, July monthly reports. Review and File Quarterly Purchase Order Report. Motion to approve a special event application for the library renovation celebration to be held on August 28, 21. A motion to approve a special event application for Riverside Swim Club Water Slide Day at Scottswood Common to be held on September 4, 2021. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside and the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding cost, maintenance, and other issues related to traffic signals and other traffic control devices. And a motion to authorize the village manager to execute an amended memorandum of understanding between the Regional Transit Authority, RTA, and the Village of Riverside, which extends the agreement from August 21 to 2021 until May 31, 2021. Does anyone have any items they'd like to be removed? Hearing none, if I can have a motion and a second?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Marsh Oska. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Board and Commission reports? Do we have any Board and Commission reports?
I actually attended the Preservation Commission meeting last Thursday, and I just thought that the board and the community might find it of interest that the commission approved a certificate of appropriateness to install solar panels on the Coonley Playhouse. The condition and stipulation was that they are not visible from the public right-of-way, but, you know, it's really good for the community to know that this kind of thing can happen, and I'd just like to applaud the owners, both for their stewardship and for their forward thinking.
Thank you. And applaud the Planning and Zoning Commission for taking up the solar panels many years ago, so thank you. Pending business. The only thing we have on pending business tonight is an ordinance providing for the registration and inspection of rental properties within the Village of Riverside. Manager Frances?
Thank you, President Ballerine. If the board would like, I can walk through the changes that were made based on the feedback. The feedback is what is outlined on the Agenda History Sheet, but I would like to make note that in speaking with Attorney Mars, he stated, and you'll note that there's one item that is not included within the ordinance, because Attorney Mars said we would need to do a separate ordinance on this item, is with regard to the building inspector going with the fire inspector for those common spaces and mechanical area inspections. So I just wanted to make note of that, so that would be an item separately that will come back to the board based on the board's direction at the last meeting. Would the board like me to kind of go through the items as it's outlined? I'm happy to do any of the above. Perhaps that's easiest or best?
One, two.
Okay. So what has been incorporated in this ordinance is as follows. The rental registry for buildings with three or more units. Registration will be completed annually. As part of the registry, the village will request the mailing address information of each unit. Therefore, the village can reach out to the renters directly by mail. Inspections will be done for buildings with three or more units. Units will be on a three-year inspection rotation. For the first three years of the program, each unit slash building will be inspected once fully in its entirety. The village will allow for self-inspection at the cost of the building owner. The inspection must be completed by a professional inspector, who must utilize a village-provided checklist, sign the appropriate village forms, and submit them to the village. The self-inspection would only be allowed if the building had no violations or issues reported in the past 12 months. No less than 20 percent of a building will be inspected annually. The entire building will be inspected by the end of third year of the program. The village will not be broken into zones, as was previously discussed. After the first three years of the program, an owner can complete a self-certification of the units that are due for inspection in a given year. This self-certification would only be allowed if the building has had no violations or issues reported in the past 12 months. If self-certification is completed in a given year, the property owner would be eligible for a reduced inspection fee. Each unit in the building will be self-certified or inspected by the village inspector over a three-year period. No less than 20 percent of a building would be inspected in a given year. Both fire and building inspections would be completed in common and mechanical spaces in multi-unit buildings with three units or more. There will be a penalty for failing to pay the annual registration fee on time. Staff revise the fees based on the feedback above, and the fees are noted. And if approved, this program would begin in January of 2020, where we would roll out the registration, and then after that piece is done, then work to schedule inspections. This item, whether the board would like to take action this evening, you have two different options. You can have a discussion. If there are no changes, or the board elects to do so, you can approve the ordinance.
Thank you. I just have a couple of housekeeping issues, and that is, I think in the title of the ordinance, it should be referred to as multifamily rental properties, because that's actually what we're targeting. And secondly, we use the word self-inspection in a couple of self-certification, self-inspection in a couple of different ways. I think we need to make sure that in the first three years, it's professionally self-certified, so it can't be self-certified by the landlord. But after the three-year period, maybe if we did landlord self-certified, just to make sure that there's no confusion between who can do the self-certifications. But that's all I have. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add or subtract, multiply, divide? Trustee Hannan?
And I think, President Ballerine, this falls more within cleanup changes and would be a question for Attorney Mars. In Section D, as in David 3, the third bullet point down, full legal name, address, telephone numbers, and email address of each and every owner. My question is, if it's an entity, what are we looking for there? And, you know, I'm not aware of many people who will own a rental building in excess of three units, who would own it in their own name, typically either through a limited liability company or through a land trust. And, you know, limited liability companies don't have home, mobile, or work numbers, or an email address. So I think that needs some clarification on what specific information we're looking for in the case of an entity.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Owner is defined broadly to include firms and corporations, et cetera, but I think that, to your point, that we should probably specify manager of an LLC, managing member, that kind of thing.
Well, that's an entity as well. My question is, you know, we're going to be dealing with situations where, for example, an LLC with another LLC is a manager. What specific information do we want in the case of an entity?
So I think in that case, I mean, as it's phrased now, they would give us the name of that LLC and the contact information relative to, you know, the agent for that. Right underneath, though, it talks about naming contact information for any agent or representative of the owner where applicable. And we also need a 24-hour emergency contact phone number further down. So I think we're getting the information we need.
I guess my question is, if we have a stack of legal entities.
Yep.
I mean, all of that is available on the state of Illinois.
Right.
Website. So what are we asking for, other than things we could look up anyway?
Well, we don't want to have to look it up. We want them to provide it to us.
Okay. I just want to manage the expectation that we're not getting any real information.
Yeah, understood. I mean, this is stuff that we could track down ourselves, but part of the idea is, okay, you're giving us an application form, you know, we can quickly refer to that and put it in our system without having to.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't expecting too much from that section. Perfect. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I guess somewhat along those lines, but going back to the definitions section, the definition of owner.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a fragment hanging at the end of that, "and all other such persons shall be bound to comply," yada, yada, yada? It doesn't seem to follow from what came before in the definition?
Right, I see what you're saying.
Maybe it's missing the word "who." Maybe it should read, "and all other such persons who shall be bound to comply with the provisions," to the same extent as the fee owner. I couldn't tell what it was in its own isolation, but I think maybe that's what the.
I'm wondering if we broke, if there used to be language about managers that we broke out at some point.
Because we're broadly enumerating a number of different types of people and agents here.
Right.
And then.
All of whom are bound to comply, but they're all defined as owners, so that, you know, that last phrase doesn't really make sense.
So maybe because it's more, the last phrase is more pro-scriptive, it really doesn't belong in the definition, and we should just start it?
Right. I think maybe we end at title holder, right?
Okay.
Because all these people are owners, they're all bound to comply the same as the owners. I think we're good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Evans?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo President Ballerine's concern about the distinction between self-certification and licensed inspector certification. I don't even really like the term "self-certify" at all until, like, year four. I don't think that we should be using it at all until we start talking about what has to happen after the three years.
So, other than in the fee schedule, and then in the post-three-years section of G2, where are we seeing self-certified? Because what I see for G2B is a reference to the option of an owner of a dwelling with no documented complaints, et cetera, by a licensed professional building inspector using a checklist and certification form provided by the village. So that doesn't really use the term self-certification.
Okay.
And that's for the first three years. And then after three years is when we get into the self-certification term.
All right.
But, you know, there is the question, then, there's a self-certification fee of $15. If somebody is, in those first three years, utilizing their own professional inspector, is that the same fee that we intend to apply to them? Because we're not going out, right? So maybe we should call the fee a self-certification or professional inspector fee.
Looking back at my notes to see what the consensus was the last time around of the board discussion. We talked about lowering, or the board talked about it, rather, about it being a lesser fee for when the property owner would be eligible to complete it.
Which is $15, so the.
Right, so if it's the first year of the program, and I hire my own home inspector, my own professional home inspector, and that person utilizes the village checklist, I think that they would be eligible for the $15 fee also, because we're not incurring any costs for anyone to go out.
Correct.
So we should call the fee in F4, self-certification or professional inspection fee as applicable, or something?
Professional certification fee?
I like that additional clarification. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I also wanted just to talk a little bit about the communication, the outreach component. I don't think it's in the ordinance, but, you know, I know we're not collecting addresses for single-family homes or condos, but they still house tenants, and anything we decide to do, like creating a landlord or tenant information sheet, should extend to those tenants. So whatever, you know, we can do to capture that information and, you know, put it together with the information that we'll be getting with this ordinance would be really helpful. I think that address list will be like a really great, important tool for us to start communicating with them. And we also should, like, budget for some mailings and consider creating maybe an anonymous tip line, or just really being intentional about providing something, providing some resources for tenants, not just sort of like, you know, say that we're doing outreach. I want to, like, be intentional about it. Do you have any, like, thoughts about a timeline or anything about when we're going to get started?
So Assistant Village Manager Monroe is already starting to work on it with her team. They've already had discussions on it. They've kind of started to pull the framework. They're evaluating whether or not we can use our existing system. It may be slightly clunky, or whether or not we're going to use a contractual system, which can have de minimis costs when you're looking at it in totality, but better management of the program. And so she's in the process of evaluating that, but they're going to create, they're going to work on both English and Spanish informational sheets for the renter information and education piece, and then we will also insert them. So for the single family, if they come in, whether it's for vehicle stickers or what have you, we have a new resident packet. And so really, the intentional piece when we are crafting this was asking for the unit numbers for the multifamily, so then we can do those mass mailings for those residents, send them those informational pieces, but also notify them of other things, like some residents don't know about vehicle stickers. General information that you would find out when you're not a renter and you're able to get that new resident packet, and so we want to try to capture that information for those residents, so we're working towards creating that. I love the idea of creating, whether it's, I don't know if it's more of a tip line, or maybe it's an anonymous email address. People may feel more comfortable with that. So we can do that, but really, actually, one of the ways that they can send things, and we've had it before where it's anonymous, is through Riverside Responds, which is our system. You know, it doesn't verify email addresses. It has that box essentially for you to fill out, but we get information in that respect all the time, then flag those issues and then evaluate. So there will be more to come with that information rollout, creating its own separate website page and creating that presence, and then perhaps even working with Riverside TV on rolling out just informational pieces for them.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you. One question I have on Page 2, under Common Areas. Should mechanical rooms be spelled out, or, I mean, I think that's one of the things we wanted to make sure we were looking at. I know it's broad, but I'm just wondering if mechanical rooms should be spelled out.
Sure. Absolutely, I agree.
If everyone's comfortable, I can entertain a motion in a second. With the changes noted.
I'm sorry?
I'll move.
A motion by Trustee Hannan, second by Trustee Evans. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Great job. This was a big undertaking. I appreciate staff. I appreciate legal, and I appreciate the dedication of all the trustees. You guys have sent in a lot of information, have spent a lot of time, and I think at the end of the day, this will work out well, and we could see how it works, and add, subtract, multiply, and divide in the next go-around. New business. Discussion of the capital funding for the parking lot fund. Director Johns.
Good evening. Before you tonight is the capital improvement plan for the parking lot fund. This is the second of our enterprise funds. So the idea is that all revenues received in this fund should cover all capital and operating expenses. Before you is a schedule for the next 10 years. Currently, we receive revenues from permit fees for quarterly permits and for hourly parking. In this plan includes a permeable paver in lot, in Lot 8, which we had previously brought before the board to approve for, to request grant funding for. This is a grant contingent project. The resurfacing of Lot 5 in 2023, and the resurfacing of Lot 4 in 2032. If you review the schedule, staff has categorized parking lot 1, 6, 7, 8, and 10 to be done with porous pavers, based on previous board direction, and the remaining lots to be done in asphalt. My first question is, are there any of those materials that you would like re-prioritized or reevaluated? Are there any projects that you would like re-prioritized within the plan?
I have a question. The residential parking lots, do people pay the fee, the quarterly fee, to park there?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I see. So they're residential, they're not commuter lots?
Lot 1 does allow for commuter and residential, so some people purchase the 24-hours permit, which is at $175 a quarter, and some people purchase the commuter if they just need it from 6:00 a.m. to, I believe, 7:00 p.m., which is $130 a quarter. which is $130 a quarter.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the only way to accelerate some of these projects other than keeping our eye out for grant funding would be to increase the, the fees for these lots. Is that something that the board would entertain at this time? Understanding that currently we are unable to fill Lot 1 due to a decrease in commuter demand.
Go ahead.
Does the staff, do you have a recommendation for us or a benchmarking? I mean, are you bringing this to our attention because you are recommending that we increase? Have other communities increased? Do we need the funding to address Lot 1 or you simply just want our direction?
I think to accelerate, if you're fine with the plan as presented, it does not really address a lot of lots till later in the time. So if you want to accelerate any of those projects, I would recommend increasing the fees.
How are, I didn't think what she's trying to ask. How are our fees compared to our neighbors?
It, they're a little, they're not the highest and they're not the lowest. Berwin's prices are slightly below us and to the west, they're slightly higher.
Berwin's $100 and ours is $130 for commuter. That's a lot lower.
Given that we are not at capacity for selling all our permits, I think that it's premature to raise the price at this stage. We can always revisit it next year if it turns out that commuter patterns return to normal.
Okay.
Okay. What about our residential lots? Are our residential lots full?
All of our lots are full except for Lot 1. So our residential lots are full. We do have wait lists for, Lot 3 is our longest current waitlist on Park Place. And then I believe there's a small waitlist on Lot 2 and 4. We look at those combined because they're so close.
And, and then, but Lot 1, are the resident portion of that lot full? Or just people don't want to go on the other side of the tracks?
People don't necessarily want to go on the other side of the tracks. So many decline a 24-hour spot in Lot 1. But in our agreement with Metro, we do have to reserve a certain amount of those as commuter spots. So there's a limit to how many 24-hour spots we can sell in that lot.
So our residential, if I read, we charge $175 a month, correct?
A quarter.
Okay. And those are all full. So now I think the question is, do, is there any appetite to raise the prices of the residential lots?
I, I don't see a need. You know, a lot of the users of these lots are renters.
I agree.
And I don't feel comfortable increasing the cost of living to those renters in our village.
Okay. Fair enough.
I agree. Are these lots materially, I mean, what kind of condition are they in relative to Lot 1?
Lot 1.
Lot 1's brand new.
Lot 1's brand new.
It's the paver one.
That, I believe, was it Lot 4 that we presented? Lot, Lot 4 is in somewhat poor condition. I do have concerns about waiting till 2032 to replace that lot. Lot 2 is going to be problematic to resurface as it's over our water reservoir. And Lot 3, we have been resistant to put on the capital plan as that may play in with the Army Corps' plan if the Groveland Wall project moves forward. So we don't want to invest a lot if it's going to be torn apart in short order.
Understood. My view is that this has been an economically difficult time for a lot of people. And so I would hate to, to echo Trustee Hannon, increase their fees. But I, I do agree that, did you say 2032 or 2035? That's quite a long time. So perhaps we could revisit again next year and see if it's a more palatable time to look at. You know, that's a significant amount of money every quarter for what sounds like a very deteriorating lot. So I don't want to let that go forward.
Those are all the questions I have this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Johns? Okay.
Thank you.
We move on to the discussion of the special event policy and procedures. Manager Francis, if you would.
Absolutely. So at our previous board meeting, there was the request for us to evaluate special events and processing of special event applications and whether or not they would need to continue, each one to come back to the village board. And so I worked with Clerk Haley to do some research and compile some information to kind of figure out the history of when it started to come to the board. And from what we can decipher, it began back in 2009 with the differentiation between a village-sponsored event versus other special events that were being requested. And so with regard to that, it was ensuring that the village was recouping our costs as it relates to various special events that were occurring. And so through that, the policy, the policy and the forms have been revamped on a number of occasions. And then also in 2016, the village board adopted a special event slash facility rental policy. And we revamped it once again, establishing different rental rates for both scout cabin, the train station and water tower facilities. And so what you have before you is just for discussion only as it relates to special events. If the board decides that they would like to make a change in the policy, we would update the existing policy that we have for board adoption at the next meeting. My recommendation would be that if we are going to move down this path, similar to what I stated at our last board meeting, that it be a longstanding event such as holiday stroll, movie in the park, RAW, farmer's market, those types of events where staff can just provide a report the month of that particular special event to advise the board that it's occurring, but can administratively handle these items. The new events, however, I would think it would still be in the interest of the village board to review those items and provide any comments that they may have. Another item that we may want to look at is just the fee structure. If we are going to make some minor modifications, also having staff do a quick evaluation to make sure that we're recovering our costs. For instance, instead of charging per barricade and trying to track how many barricades, maybe it's just a barricade fee for certain things. And that would be similar to some discussions that staff had after the board had their discussion about the special event of block parties as well.
Trustees?
I do like the idea of just having new events come before the board, whereas existing ones, we've already approved it. Jessica makes a perfect point for a holiday stroll. You know, it's been going on for 40 years. Cruise nights, car shows, I mean, we've had those all the time. So why do those have to come before the village board? New ones, I understand, we'd have a discussion on.
I guess my question is, how, how much administrative time are we saving by not having the application come in front of the board?
Then staff doesn't have to incorporate it in the board packet. We don't have to do an agenda history sheet to attach it. It's not a terrible amount of time and Clerk Haley is wonderful at processing those requests, but it's just, it, it is slightly time-consuming. Department heads and myself will, will still review the applications for public safety-related items and measures with regard to traffic closures and things of that sort. But it's, it's just another item to add in your packet.
One thing I do like about having it come before the board, even if it's on the consent agenda, you know, there may be certain events where various trustees will get feedback that won't necessarily make its way up to village staff. And by having this on the agenda, it's an opportunity that there is a suggestion. For example, you and I have had a back and forth on some events. That can get there and make sure it's noticed. And, and I think takes a little bit of the burden off staff to remember, you know, what was raised three weeks after this event that I have to remember now a year later is that's getting approved, as opposed to the trustee who raised that is going to raise his, raise his or her hand at the meeting and say, hey, is this problem addressed? So I, you know, unless there's a tremendous burden being resolved, which I understand there is some burden, but not a tremendous burden, I, I like the idea of it coming before the board, even if it is perfunctory for certain events. And my other question is, for regular events, when does an event become a regular event? I agree with Trustee Gallegos, holiday stroll, that's been around forever. No one should have to think about that. But, you know, car show, you know, drive-by, say hello to Santa. I mean, is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it, it, it just seems to me that we're creating a lot of bureaucracy over what is automatically renewed and what's not, where it's really not a problem to get in front of the board and give the trustees opportunity to speak on it.
Trustee Evans?
I, I'm trying to figure out what the problem was that we were trying to fix with this.
Trustee Gallegos initially had bought up at the last meeting about there was a special event application for Paddle On that kept having to be adjusted, given the fact of the level of the river. And so he wanted to, he had asked that staff be entrusted to adjust that special event application date as needed. And then Trustee Pollock had said, well, why don't we look at this in a more global sense of, why don't we change it so that there's administrative review for certain items? And I know that there were a couple of board members that didn't seem to be on board. And so I kind of came to the compromise of, well, what about then if they've been successful for three years and we haven't had any negative feedback, you know, them not coming on an agenda?
Yeah, I do appreciate that you went through the process. But I like the ordinance the way it is and like that. I like to take a look at it. And, you know, things change over, over time. Staff changes. The environment changes. A lot of things change. So even though it's the same event, there could be a different context. So I like looking at them.
Trustee Evans, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Do love the idea of going back and revisit the cost structure. I think that's well needed.
The other thing that I would suggest is this ordinance from 2009 seemed punitive for items that we're looking at, asking for the assistance of Parks and Rec. It was asking for 120% of the village's actual cost, which it's, so that would be my other recommendation. Usually Parks and Rec helps facilitate, but to quantify that in the vacuum of all the different staff members, especially when we're reviewing, that is something that's very difficult. I think perhaps at that point in time, there were events that Parks and Rec was doing a lot more of. But now we have more volunteers and other organizations. For example, RAW and the Farmer's Market Committee where we're, we're being made whole or being reimbursed for our direct personnel costs. So that would be my other suggestion.
Actually.
Trustee Clarity, please.
I'll just say, just as a counterpoint, I'm fine with it, generally speaking, as proposed. I do agree. I think it's appropriate to look at the cost structure. I think that limiting a little bit of the burden on staff to prepare the materials, put them in there, submit them for our review minute, that it, it seems not unreasonable of an ask to me. I think it's fairly straightforward to set a number of years if it's been approved by the board for more than five years or three, whatever we decide. That does not seem unreasonable to me. I do think to the point that there may be feedback, you know. I think what you're proposing is to provide a report to the board or a list of what's been approved by the staff. At least that would jog trustees' memories if they wanted to provide some feedback. So I'll, I'll just have a gentle counterpoint that I, it seems not unreasonable to me.
And I have another gentle counterpoint, and that is to Trustee Gallegos's point. If you have an event that is very weather-dependent and it's already been approved by the board, why do we need to keep coming back to the board for the same thing that gets adjusted based on the conditions of the river? Or, you know, like, say you have Ravinia that gets rained out by a monsoon. I mean, who knows? So perhaps if the board has approved the event once and administrative adjustments are necessary from there, that can be done on that basis.
Mr. Mars?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. If there's not already, you might want to put in your event application a potential rain date where they can put them in. And then for trickier events like the paddle one, we could just, as you approve that event, just delegate to the, to the village manager the ability to approve a new date in the event that the original one isn't able to go.
But like the kayak event, that hasn't happened for three years yet. So would it even fall under the, that category?
I think what Attorney Mars is saying that, that, for instance, that particular event would come before the board, but then with the authority.
Like RAW, for instance?
Yeah. And then it would be weather-dependent or it could be rescheduled based on the board's approval.
Right. So let's say it's originally scheduled for June 15th, right? And the application says, here's our backup date. Or if because of the river levels, it's hard to tell what your backup date is going to be. It could just be, we approved this special event for June 15th with the understanding that if that date doesn't work due to river conditions, the village manager can approve a different date. And that way they don't have to keep coming back as the, as they did this time.
Lance had an idea last time where he said that if a special event application came in front of the, the manager, that the manager can send out, you know, the, a notice to the trustees. And if any two trustees have an issue with the event, then the event would be put on the subsequent board, or on the subsequent board meeting. That was just one of his, one of his ideas. I just want to make sure I shared that because some of us weren't here last week. So I just wanted.
Seems like it's overcomplicating.
Yeah. I'm just, just.
I mean, I like the idea of it being, I'm sorry to talk over you.
Okay.
I, I, I like the idea of it being on the agenda. And if somebody has, you know, it's, to me, it's about resident feedback as well. I mean, a lot of times I'll see something on the agenda, think it's no big deal. My email will blow up and we're like, oh, okay, I'm looking at it a little differently now. And so it's nice to have that. Here's what the village is doing. Here's what we're considering. So again, I, I like what we have now.
Okay. Do you have enough information to do what you need to do?
Well, I'm not sure. So I'm going to summarize for, for purpose of the meeting minutes and just confirm that this is the case. We're going to update the policy to remove the 120% and make it 100% for the Parks and Rec purposes or for staff cost purposes.
Realign the costs of the.
We're going to evaluate to see the costs, what should be adjusted, and we'll bring that piece back. But I don't know that I am fully aware of what the consensus is of, are we going to continue to have it on the agenda? Are we making that modification to the policy? Or are we doing it as an administrative review?
What, what does everyone think about if, if an event is three years or more with no issues? Do you still want it to come in front of the board?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
All right. So the only, I think the only thing that.
Are you going to pull, sorry?
Yeah, we don't.
Maybe you want to pull it, Ben.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't need to see it on the agenda if it's been an event without issues for three years.
How do you define without issues?
It's been approved by the board.
It's been approved by the board.
But how, okay, the event occurs, what's the definition of without issues?
Well, I would imagine without injuries, without complaints, without, you know, to the village manager. I don't.
Or to a, I mean, again, I don't see the harm of putting it on the agenda or putting it on the consent agenda. I, I'm not seeing, you know, does that mean if somebody sends an email to me that that's, I mean, an issue? I just like the open meetings concept that we have here.
Well, if someone had an issue, they can come in and publicly speak and say, hey, guess what? I'm against this because of X, Y and Z.
It's not an issue that, yeah, has been brought to the village manager or, I mean, anybody but you personally. I mean, if somebody approaches you at a, you know, event or, you know, addresses something one-on-one with you, that isn't the same as communicating it to the full board or to the village manager.
So if at 3rd of July, someone comes up and says the band's too loud, is that an incident? I mean, I, I just think it takes us down this ridiculous path of what's the standard.
But I, I think we could rely on village staff to provide feedback or share their concerns, if there's concerns with a particular event. But in most cases, I think the events that you're talking about appear on the consent agenda because there is no discussion necessary.
I, I would be curious to know why in 2009, they decided to put everything back in the consent agenda. Because are we going to just go back and, are we just going to go back and forth? And keep changing based on whatever the board...
So I will take the very neutral approach. So I wasn't here in 2009, so full disclosure on that particular point. But based on my research, there were some concerns by that board at that point in time with special events and the amount of money that the village was spending on special events. And so by having this piece, and there was also some question of, I think, at that point in time, you can correct me if I'm wrong, about whether or not to eliminate the Parks and Recreation Department. So that would make sense about the 120% as it relates to this particular resolution and recovering it. I believe also during that time or shortly thereafter, there was discussion about the Parks and Recreation Tax Levy. So there was numerous pieces at play with this. But I think really, the greatest focus was making sure the village wasn't spending a lot on special events. And so special events scaled down significantly during that time. And it's been through the years that they've built up. For example, RAW is a great example of then a group of volunteers kind of took that special event and made it what it is today. It's in coordination and collaboration with the village and Parks and Recreation Department. Farmers Market started as a volunteer group. And now Parks and Rec has worked in tandem with them because there's just, it's very demanding to do the market and manage it. So I think at that point in time, the board... And I don't want to say everyone on the board, but there were some board members that were very concerned about these different community events and how much the village's general fund was subsidizing for these community events. And so as part of this, it was, I believe, to ensure that there weren't excessive amounts of money being spent. I believe that's also when Friends of the Fourth was shortly formed because of some of these pieces.
Well, I think to summarize, if we're only talking about four or five events or six events that we think is something that could be administrative, I don't see any reason why those things still can't come in front of the board. It's not that much work. And plus, on the other hand, you know, when they come in front of the board, it also gives either a trustee or a member or a paper to make sure they know about them, they write about them, and they make sure that our residents are aware of them. So I just, you know, one more layer of communication, I think, is good. And if we're talking about such a small amount of numbers, I don't see the time. But I do like the idea of the weather event, that these things, if we've already approved it once and it gets delayed because of weather or river conditions or whatever, that, you know, that could be administrative. Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
The weather seems, but not having an event twice...
Correct.
In a summer.
Correct.
Right.
They would have to come back for a second of the weather change.
Can we, can they, just to attorney Mars's suggestion, supply a secondary rain date in their application? Or weather date? I mean, to the extent possible. But I'm very comfortable with staff being given the power to change the date of an event.
Yeah, we can add that on the application where possible.
Okay. We're in the Midwest. If we're going to have more kayaking events, there's going to be a lot of different things that go into effect there with river conditions and weather. I mean, we can change instantly in 24 hours, as we've seen. Again, are we going to have the board decide on a different date just because of date change itself? Have you already decided that we're going to have an event on that one?
You can...
Yeah, the ability to change the date.
Yeah, the date can be changed.
On something that's more than just weather-related like that, I think it would be appropriate just to give the village staff free rein to approve a date and not tie the event organizer to a specific date.
To try to pick a date. Okay? Thank you. Now, do we have enough?
Yes, thank you.
I think so.
Trustee Reports and Communications, do we have anything this evening?
Oh, let's see.
Trustee Mars Azka?
I do. So the Frederick W. Olmsted Society and the Riverside Public Library are teaming up to host a Zoom presentation on Thursday, August 26th, on our role in urban bird migration. 7:00 p.m. You can sign up through the library's website. The gentleman, Henry Griffin of Birdwalks Oak Park, who is going to be giving that talk, will also, on Sunday, August 29th, be leading an actual bird walk. So you can sign up for that. That's a 7:00 a.m. event on Sunday, the 29th. You can sign up for that through the Olmsted Society website. Also, last but not least, on August 29th at 2:00 p.m. is the walking tour of the South Division. And that's all I have for my updates.
Thank you, trustee Mars Azka. Anybody else, please? Okay. We have no need for an executive session tonight. So I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
Trustee Mars Azka. Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Mars Azka.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannon.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.